WACROSS presents an election forum for Northwest Local School District Board of Education member. There are five candidates running for two seats. They are, in alphabetical order, Monica L. Bowles, Diane Bradley, Jim Detzel, Elaine Gock, and Matt Tietzort. Welcome to yet another WACROSS Election Forum. This forum is for the Northwest Local School District Board of Education members. I'm Dana Gagnon, Government Programming Coordinator for WACROSS Community Media, and I'm joined by Jenny Key from the Cincinnati Enquirer and Community Press. Thanks for being here.
Glad to be here.
Now, we have with us four candidates. We have Monica Bowles, Diane Bradley, Jim Detzel, and Matt Tietzort. Elaine Gock had also planned to be here, but she had medical difficulties and was unable to join us tonight. Now, we are going to start with the candidates' two-minute opening statements. But when that's done, if you're watching this program live on October 2nd, you will have the opportunity to participate in the program yourself by emailing in your own questions, and I will get them here in the studio, and I can ask the candidates for you. If you are watching this live on October 2nd, you will see that email address show up at the bottom of your screen, and that's when you'll be able to participate and send me some emails. So, we're going to get started with Monica with your two-minute opening statement.
Good evening. As Dana mentioned, my name is Monica Bowles. I am pleased to be here tonight, and thank you for the invitation. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I do have a daughter in the district. I have lived in a district in my home for about thirteen years. I've been pretty active in the community, as well as in the schools, through various volunteer committees and other things. I also work, I have worked in the public and private sector with a career centered in housing and communities for about twenty-five years. So, my volunteer work started early in my Wright State University days and have followed me till this day. One of the things that has led me here to this position is, the more involved I've been, the more questions I've had, and the more opportunities I see to have an impact for the better on our community. So, I look forward to chatting with you tonight and answering any questions that you have. Thank you for the invite.
Okay, thank you. And Diane?
Hi. My name is Diane Bradley, and I have lived in the district for eighteen years, and I have two young children myself who attend the public schools. So, I'm very excited that we are taking part of what I'm actually a part of as far as trying to be on the school board itself. I myself have worked for Toyota for seventeen years, and I currently own my own business. And I'm hoping to take that experience of my own business experience to parlay that to the actual education itself, because I feel that education itself is a business, and there's some aspects we can take and that I can contribute from that point. I'm looking forward to speaking and answering the questions that come to me.
Okay, thank you. And Jim?
Hi, my name is Jim Detzel. I'm currently on the Northwest School Board. I'm a lifelong resident, fifty-nine years. I've lived in Colrain Township. I'm a Northwest graduate. My wife's a Northwest graduate. My three daughters went to the schools in the district, graduated from Corrin High School in '03, '05, and '09. You know, I started my business in 1979. I stayed in the district. The community, I really like it. You know, we chose to build a house, raise our kids, you know, in the district where we went to school, and, you know, we really enjoy it. On the school board, on the building committee, when we just did our three elementaries that we built a year and a half ago, so I was on that committee. I'm actually the representative for Butler Tech. I'm on their school board. So, along with the duties at Northwest, we have board meetings at Butler Tech and committees that we're on, you know, at that level also. So, I'm just here to answer any questions and go from there. Thanks.
And Matt?
Yes, hello. My name is Matt Tietzort. I'm a candidate for Northwest Local School Board, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I've lived in Colrain Township in the school district most of my entire life, grew up in Pleasant Run, went through the school system through Colrain Elementary, Pleasant Run Elementary, Pleasant Run at that time Junior High, and Northwest High School. And became a, married my wife Angie twenty-five years ago, and raised four boys in the Grossbeck area, and the three older ones have already graduated from Corrin High School. I currently, at the moment, have a freshman at Corrin High School. And thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Look forward to questions.
Okay, great. Great.
Well, this is our patented first question on the evenings as we've been talking with candidates. Diane, we're going to start with you. If you could talk to us about what you think the top three issues facing the Northwest Local School District are, and how, what's your plan to address those?
We'll give you two minutes.
Sure, okay. In two minutes, I'll cover those. So, number one for me is the academics, and I'm very concerned with the reporter, the rating that we received on our report card for our current curriculum that we have in place. And I'm, myself personally, I'm actually looking to work with the leadership, as well as the community, on specifically the third-grade reading guarantee. It's very important for me to actually address it at the foundation or at the core where the students are just learning the practice, because if we wait too long or if we don't have it there, then it's nothing but downhill from there. So, my main focus of helping address our report card issues or curriculum concern is specifically working with the third-grade reading guarantee section. Another item that I feel that we definitely need some work or focus on is our financial responsibility, our fiscal responsibility. This has nothing to do with our treasurer. I think our treasurer is amazing. Amy Wells couldn't say anything better about her, but there are some things that are being presented to her that I think are a little bit out of the character or what we actually would want as a community as far as to actually be the most sound district. So, I would like to go in and really get into the details of some of the things that we actually can work on to make ourselves more fiscally responsible. And the last thing for me, but it's not the last thing, actually comes first, is safety. I'm really concerned with the, that we have sections of the community that have to transport and actually walk in the streets, and they don't have sidewalks. And that's something I look to partner with the township on, you know, Springfield, as well as Green, as well as Colrain, on some very key areas that we already have funds set aside for to actually get the sidewalks in place so we have safe transport of our students to our schools.
Okay, thank you very much. Jim?
Yeah, I think the top three things for myself is, the first thing is obviously the levy. I mean, it comes down to money. It seems money is, comes down to everything comes with money. The 7.5 mil levy that we're putting up, this is, we absolutely need this after, since '04, we've been cut $11 million, you know, in state funding. So, we need money to keep what we have. That's why we're putting this levy up, because we're in spending deficit. You know, if we, if we don't pass this levy, then there'll be almost $9 million in cuts that we voted on at our last board meeting that will have to take effect for the next school year. So, that's a, that's a big thing. I'm treasurer of the levy committee, you know, we're out every night trying to get funding, you know, to run the levy committee and gets, you know, get people behind it. That's one of the big things. And like Diane said, you know, the grades, the, is a big, is a big thing that we have to work on. I know we got to see on our report card that we just got, a couple of weeks ago, we had quite a bit of improvement in some areas. So, that's one of the things, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
Yes, the top three issues for me are, I would like to see improvements on our state report card, and finances, and safety in the schools. And what I would like to do about those three things, so on the state report card, I think we need to celebrate the successes and continue, you know, figure out what is causing those successes and continue to do those things. And then where the deficiencies are, need to look into those and see what we need to do to improve those. Remove the barriers to education for the students, you know, research what other schools have done and that we could adopt at Northwest Local to improve success. Finances, as Jim mentioned, the levy's very important to go forward, because, you know, we're not going to be able to do a whole lot if we're just going to, you know, be cutting the budget to avoid, you know, deficit spending. And so, we need to, you know, be diligent about, you know, what we're spending and that we're spending things in the proper places. And safety in schools, we need to continue to make sure that we, you know, the students feel safe in a safe learning environment, because if they don't feel safe in schools, then they're going to have difficulty learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
I have the first one. I think that leadership is critically important, so we can steer the direction of our district in the right direction. And I, and I say that, I think that with that leadership, we need to be fiscally and operationally sound. We need to be transparent. And I think we have to have a collaborative approach to leadership, and what I mean by that is, we're engaging not only our parents, but we're engaging our staff, our teachers, everyone from our janitors to, you know, to our principals and everybody in between. We need, they're going to be the best people to identify where the deficiencies are, and I think we need to collaborate with them, as well as top administrators, to move forward. I also think that fiscal accountability is critically important. We need to be thinking about not just our state funding cuts, but how we're spending our money. You know, are we projecting ahead? Are we looking at ways to reduce our expenses? Are we staying on top of our revenue? Are we being transparent with the community about all the above? And then finally, I think academic achievement is critically necessary and important. I know I get a lot of feedback from people across this district around concerns around cutting some academic programs. So, I think for me, those are the top, the top concerns that I have, although there's others, but those are certainly critically important ones.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. Now, if you are watching this live on October 2nd, I want to remind you that you are invited to email in your questions to me right here on the set, live@wacross.org, if you're watching this live. There are some guidelines. If you're sending in questions, you must be a resident of the Northwest Local School District to send in your question. Your question must include your full name, your street, and your community. Now, I'm not going to say all those on the air. I'm just going to say your first name and your street. Questions must be phrased for all candidates, not just one, for those questions to qualify. So, I'm going to start, we have, we do have some emailed questions. This is a question from Mike in Colrain, and Mike would like to know if you support the levy on the ballot, we were just talking about this, and do you think the current board is asking for too much? This one starts with you, Jim, and we are going to do two minutes on this.
Okay. Yes, I am absolutely in support of the levy. I'm actually the levy treasurer. So, you know, we, I don't think we're asking for too much at 7.5 mil. We just, we're asking for what we can keep, what we have right now, our AP courses, our CCP courses, our Butler Tech courses. You know, it's not, we're not asking for more money so we can add other stuff. We just want to keep what we have right now. You know, we're out every night putting signs up, calling people for donations. So, yeah, I'm absolutely for the, for the levy.
Okay, thanks. All right, Jim?
Yes.
Matt, you're, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mike, for the great question. I am in support of the levy, and are they asking for too much? I don't think they're asking for too much. It's a pretty, you know, substantial levy, but to continue the programs that are in place as is, it's, you know, going to be necessary. And like I said before, to do any, you know, changes in programs or curriculum or what have you, it's going to take funds, and not going to be able to do that if, like I said before, a forward one is making cuts to avoid deficit spending. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Monica?
Okay. To answer the question, yes, I do support the levy. I also support some fiscal fiduciary reform, I guess you could say. My last name, I want to preface this, I know that I've been talking about fiscal responsibility and accountability for some time. One of the things I want you all to know, my last name is Bowles, not Rockefeller. So, it's in that spirit that I share with you as a single mother, that I certainly have no interest in, you know, putting a heavier tax burden on anybody. I understand the consequences and the ramifications with that personally. However, when I see our, some of these kids, and also as a parent, you know, I don't think that we should cut our children's, I don't want to see anything cut. At the same time, I do think that it's critically necessary for us to reevaluate where our money's going, how it's being spent. Do we have the right programs? Do we have people teaching them? Are we having, you know, leadership that's relevant to the positions and to the reform that we need in this district? So, I think, yes, we do need some money. And if elected, I certainly would rather not go into a new position with having to do cuts immediately. But I think that we definitely need the funds to make sure that our district is moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And Diane?
Hi. So, I'm nearing the rest of the board with the yes as far as supporting the levy. I have voted in all the elections, and I can't imagine not supporting the levy, to be honest with you. I live here in the district. My property will be affected if the levy doesn't pass. And if elected to the board, I don't want to imagine what my responsibility would be as far as trying to have to make the cuts if we did, if the levy didn't pass. My one concern, actually going to the answer of the question of, is it too much? I just honestly wish we didn't get to this point where we waited twelve years to actually ask for another levy. So, my understanding that the last levy was passed in 2007, and we're twelve years later from that. So, I feel if, if we were at several increments in between now and then, that there actually would be less of a hit or less of a burden, or feel it not quite as strong as far as this levy being so large as the sentiment I'm receiving from the community. So, I just wish we were in the position where we had asked for it and we had smaller increments prior to this point. But in order to, the levy that's being requested is just to maintain, and we don't want to just maintain, I think as a district, we actually want to get better. So, I hope that we're able to be more creative with some of the funds if this levy passed to actually make it better with the funds that we are allowed to use.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have some questions emailed. I have one from Kurt from Cliffside Drive, and he would like to know if you have children in the district, and if not, what interests you about serving as a Board of Education member?
And we're going to start with you.
Start with me. Thank you, Kurt, for the question. Yes, I do have children in the district. I have a freshman at Corrin High School currently, and he's involved in marching band in his second year. So, I have a vested interest in the district and how the district moves, you know, going forward, and, but I want, you know, I want every, every child in the district to have, you know, opportunities to excel and further their career beyond, you know, graduating from the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Monica?
Okay. Hi, Kurt. I do have a child in the district. I do have a daughter at Pleasant Run Elementary. And I think one of, sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. Kurt wanted to know, do you have children in the district? And if not, what interests you about serving as a Board of Education member? But I think even if you do have children, we'd still be interested in hearing why you're interested in serving.
For some reason, yeah. Yeah, sure, absolutely. Well, I guess you could say it's in my, in my nature to be involved. I did, as soon as my daughter was enrolled in school here, I did join PTA and volunteered in other capacities in the school. I think that parental involvement is critically necessary for the success of any district, and also for our own children, to be honest. I'm very fortunate in that I have a career where I have that ability to be a part of the community and volunteer in the schools and outside of the schools. So, you know, as I see opportunities, while there's, there are definitely some issues, I think with those issues come opportunities for improvement and growth, and really for me to learn as well. And I just chose to, you know, take the initiative to hopefully get involved and make some positive changes, and I enjoy doing it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Diane?
Thank you, Kurt, for your question. And yes, I do have children in the district, I have two, and they both attend the public school, public schools. And the drive to be on this board is specifically for that, that these are my children. I'm making decisions for my kids, the people I gave birth to. But the decisions I make obviously don't impact just my children. I'm looking and understand that my decisions impact the community, and I'm taking consideration of how I would care for my children as far as the decisions I'm making to also impact the children. So, that's one of the core reasons I got here. I started off because I had some concerns with some of the things that were going on in the district, and I just started getting involved in other communities and other aspects, and the opportunity came, and I, actually I had the opportunity to serve in the board currently. But I'm looking to continue, because as I hear more and I learn more and the more time I spend on the board, the more I see that I can actually offer as far as the opportunity. So, that's what I'm looking to establish by being on the board.
Thank you. And now it's to you, Jim.
Yeah, Kurt, I do have three children that have graduated from the district, like I said earlier, in 2003, 2005, and 2009. And I know what a good education they got. So, I'm, I'm here, and I want to make sure the other kids in our community can get a good education, because I know how important that is. You know, if you go on to college, if you go on to, like Butler Tech, to a career tech school, you know, just to give you an example, we had four kids come out of our engineering class at Corrin High School that, that got their associate's degree when they just graduated. So, look at the kind of money that those kids, you know, are saving and going on to college, and we want to, you know, that's a huge opportunity. Our manufacturing, our machine manufacturing class over there also, you know, we have twenty-six, twenty-seven kids, you know, they have a manufacturing day where we have thirty companies coming, the PNGs, the GEs, the clipboards, they come in. Every single kid got offered a job. We had one kid two years ago, he got offered from eleven companies, wanted him to come and work for them. You know, they start out between forty and $50,000. So, those are the type of opportunities that, because I don't have my kids in school, I have, I have a grandson that'll be five next year, so he'll be starting kindergarten. So, that's, you know, that's a big opportunity for me to help impact, you know, his life.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Now, I have another email here, and this one's from Brock on Moreno Drive. And one of Brock's questions is, how do you plan on keeping students and teachers engaged and learning and feeling like they matter? And we are going to start this one with you, Monica.
Okay. Well, you said a key thing, and you said engaged. I will, I will tell you that I think sometimes, I think we as people, as a society, tend to meet people where we think they should be instead of where they are. And that is something I've learned over the years, not just professionally, but in my volunteer work as well. And so, having said that, we have an extremely diverse, not necessarily just by race, but socio-economically and otherwise diverse school district. And so, you know, we have single parents raising children, traditional nuclear families, foster parents, grandparents, great-grandparents, and everything else under the sun. And so, there isn't a one-size-fits-all approach in engagement with everybody. So, I think that we need people who understand that level and that complexity of diversity so we're better able to reach all those people, and it's not going to be just one way. It's going to be a variety of ways.
Thank you. Diane?
So, my thought as far as keeping the teachers engaged is, for one thing, starting and asking questions, and not just assuming that what is being brought down from the leadership is the best way to handle it. I'm a firm believer in actually getting the information directly from them, and not just getting information for information's sake, but actually making changes based on the information you receive. So, actually showing them that their words count, that their input matters. And the more you show that their input and words matter, the more they'll give, or the more that they'll be willing to be a part of the team. So, I feel that as far as keeping them engaged is actually showing that they are part of the team, that they are included, and we value their response. So, that's what I would love to do as far as getting the teachers engaged or keeping them engaged in the district.
Thank you. And now it's to you, Jim.
With engaging the teachers, I think, I think our leadership does ask our teachers, we give them professional development, how to improve in teaching different ideas. So, I know that we do that for, for our teachers. Engaging our students, I think it starts at home with, with their parents. Whether you're a single parent or not, I think, you know, having, having that there where, you know, they're involved, they're excited, wanting to come to school, you know, I think that's, that's the key for engaging the students, is, you know, you got to, you got to have some support at home, you know, then you have your teachers, you know, there to support them, you know, in, in school.
Great, thank you. And Matt?
Okay. Thank you, Brock, for the question. So, how to keep teachers and students engaged? I think it's going to take a collaborative effort between the board and administration and the teachers, and listening to the teachers, and, you know, finding out what they need to, you know, further engage, engage with the students. Another thing I think really helps, as a parent, it's such a wonderful thing when I'll receive an email from a teacher about my son, or any of them. And then I pass that on to my son that, you know, wow, I, you know, your teacher said this about you. And I think that's, you know, you know, great for my son to hear, you know, that his, you know, teacher has gone that extra step. So, thank you.
All right, we are getting more emails as we speak, which is great for you guys, right?
Yeah, sure.
Some of them are asking some things that it looks like we covered while they were typing. We had Chris on Chopen also wanted to know about who supported, EJ wanted to know who supported the levy. So, it looks like we've been doing that. So, let's go to Chris on Chopen has, would like to know what you would do in your first hundred days.
If you were elected.
If you're elected. If you're not elected, I'm sure you'll do fun things too. But this question is about what you would do in your first hundred days in office if you're elected. And we are going, now that I've distracted you, we're going to start with you, Diane.
Okay, no problem. My first hundred days, I have big thoughts and big plans. There are some leadership changes that I would really like to be a part of. I see a great opportunity to make some adjustments at the top. Is there a question? Can you hear me?
Yes, you're fine.
Okay. There's some adjustments at the top that I think that we really need to start with. And I think that, starting with that change right there, we'll actually engage a lot of the teachers, a lot of the parents, a lot of the students. And from there, as I mentioned, the third-grade reading guarantee, I want to get on that immediately, because by this time, the first set of tests would already taken place, and there would be an opportunity to actually work with the students who didn't necessarily make it through on the first time, to offer it to those students. And it's, you know, an opportunity, obviously, would be free on the school property to the families, to actually get in there and really work with them, again, at their level. There are a lot of things that some students pick up, but there's some things they miss, and just from just changing a different perspective, they may get it. So, I would actually like to work with that team on that additionally. Some other things I would like to work in would be, again, mentioning about the fiscal responsibility. I would like to see, you know, the org chart and go through where everyone is and who's there and who are, you know, access, and see if we can actually comb through on some opportunities, not necessarily to, to get rid of, but just make some adjustments and some shifts within our faculty that can be better, more beneficial to our students. So, that's how I would like to start.
Okay, great. And Jim, same question.
Well, the first hundred days, I hope it's that we've passed a levy, and we don't have to worry about cutting $9 million in services and programs for our kids. You know, like Diane said, the third-grade proficiency test, that's very important. I think that's something we need, not that we don't concentrate on it, but we need to press ahead and move on with that, and, and see where the administration leads us and what, what they're looking for, what, what we, what we need, what we can change. You know, keeping our AP courses, keeping, you know, all of our academics where they should be, and improving, improving our report card. You know, I see as average is, it's okay, we've improved, but we need to move up to the next level. You know, that takes, that takes time. You know, we have, we have time to do that, and it's just, we need to focus on that. And we got our strategic plan that we use. So, I really enjoy that, talking about that and seeing where that leads us as a district.
Okay, great, thank you. And we're going to bring it to you, Matt.
All right. Thank you, Chris, for the question. What I would do in the first hundred days is, I'd really like to dig into more about the state report card. the state report card. And like I mentioned before, you know, what we're doing right, continue to do that, but where we're deficient and what can we as a school district and the administration and the teachers and the school board do about all that? And I want to, you know, see, I'd like to see a start, a plan moving forward to improve our state report card. And another thing I would like to do in the first hundred days is, my, my last few years, you know, I've been involved with Corrine High School, Whiteman Middle, Struble, and Wago Elementary. I like to visit some of the other schools just to see how they operate and learn more about the district. Thank you.
Monica.
Thank you, Chris, for your question. One of the first things that I would like to do, I consider myself somewhat well-informed, but I would definitely like to take additional data in that I don't already have access to and really vet that and scrutinize it and have a better understanding of exactly where we're at. On the surface, from some things that I have noticed, both as a parent and as a volunteer, is I think there are a lot of opportunities to close some of our achievement gaps. And so with that, I do think that it is critically necessary to evaluate positions, the right roles, make sure that we have the right people in the right roles, and, and really evaluate, you know, any gaps in talent that we may have to make, and make sure that we're doing things to attract that talent to move us forward. I also think that parental engagement is important. I know that, you know, in a perfect world, everybody's working, you know, as a traditional job, everybody can take time off of work to get to a meeting in the middle of the day or even in the evening. But the reality is, not everybody has that access or has that lifestyle. So I would like to see more of meeting people, again, not where we think they should be, but where they are. So I would like to see more parental events and opportunities, meetings and such for engagement held in the evenings when people are not at work. Even some, you know, for some of those folks who work third shift, there's some opportunities for them to meet during the day, but I think that there's an access problem. And then finally, I would really like to see us in the first one hundred days become more transparent. I think that we need to put more information out there that is readily accessible, easily readable on our websites, if that's going, you know, home with our students, if that's more from social media. And I'm out of time, so I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thanks. So I'm going to kind of meld a question that we already planned to ask you with one that emailed because they dovetail really nicely. So what's unique about your skills and experience that would, that you would bring to the Northwest Local School District as a board member? And Chris from Chopin would like to know why the community should vote for you or support you.
And we're going to start with you, Jim.
Well, I think the community should vote for me because I, I've been on here twelve years. Like I said, I'm a lifelong resident. I spend a lot of time volunteering. I was a volunteer coach for thirteen years at Corrine High School for cross-country and track. I go to professional development a couple times a year, the Ohio School Boards Association to become a better board member. I go to the National Association of School Boards Conference also for professional development. You know, just, I, I have, I have an interest, you know, in all the kids to get a good education because I know how tough it is. Once you graduate and you're out there in the real world trying to make money, you know, trying to make a living, you know, you need a good education and good background, good foundation, you know, to, to get a job and to make a good living. And I think in our district, we, you can get that whether you want to go take some AP classes, go to college, go through the Butler Tech area, you know, for career tech. So we have, we have a wide range of, of, you know, opportunities out there for, for our students. And, and it, everybody, you know, can, can get those opportunities.
Thank you. And?
Okay. So, you know, what is unique about my skills and responsibilities? Well, something that I've been involved with all my life is boy scouting. And for over the past twenty years, I've been a scout leader in cup scouting and boy scouting. So I think I could bring a lot of those traits that I observe in scouting as far as like being trustworthy and loyal and along the lines of the scout law and the oath, and I'll bring those to the school district. And, you know, that brings me experience, working in committees, working with others to accomplish tasks. And I also think you should vote for me because I, I'll be a critical thinker and ponder decisions because I'll be sure that I want to make the best decision for the students for the school district. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Matt. And Monica.
Okay. Well, one of the things that I think as far as unique experiences I bring, I have direct experience working on very complex budgets. So believe it or not, I've been in charge of budgets, I've had to establish performance, I've had to implement them on, on various levels of complexity in both the public and the private sector. So I understand budgeting and finances really well. Another thing is, you know, my, my personal circle is very diverse. I grew up with a lot of opportunities many did not have. And, and as a direct result of that, I have close personal friends and networks from the top of the food chain down to the bottom, which is, I think, synonymous to what our, our district is. And so I think when you have that level of experience in dealing with different types of people and situations, then, you know, you're in a unique position for, you know, to be in a community this diverse, to bring different insights to the table, maybe some that haven't been realized. And I think that's important. I'm passionate about communities. I've worked in housing for over twenty-five years. And I've seen what happens in, in various community, communities rather, across the tri-state area. I've worked with municipalities and I understand what happens when our schools do not work like they should. I've seen the devastation in many communities because of the, you know, the so-called housing crisis that we had. And I understand the direct correlation between education, economic development, and really the economic viability in our personal property values. And so all those things go hand in hand. And I think I bring those unique experiences to the table to help, to help move our district forward.
Great. Thank you. And Diane.
Thank you, Chris, for your question. And why would you vote for me or what's unique about me is I did graduate from Ohio State University. I do have a degree in engineering, but I also, and I did the seventeen years working in, in the industry, but I also am business owner. I created something out of nothing. It's been around for three years. I, even though I have a college degree, I can speak to the layperson. I'm not just this one person who speaks over someone's head. I'm at the level where we can talk at a straight, one-on-one and where you are perspective. So as far as the, the education, I am passionate about education. We need both. We need blue-collar workers and we need those who are college-bound. And I'm working with both because I've done both and I walk both paths. So that is where I'm hoping that you would actually vote for me is to see the commonality and what I'm striving for. And one of the things is that I'm not someone who would actually just vote with the norm and I don't just follow status quo. I have no problem asking the tough questions. I have no problem saying no or voting no on something if I don't feel it's best for our community. So with that support is what I'm hoping the community will support me as well.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, so we have another question from Chris on Chopin. And she would like to know, what will you do to promote diversity in our changing district and community? And we're starting this round of answers with Matt.
Okay. So, so thank you, Chris, for the question. What would I do to promote diversity in the?
In our changing district and community.
Right, okay. So I think that, that starts with engaging the residents, engaging the students, engaging with the teachers, and a collaborative effort to include everybody in the district and giving everybody opportunities to succeed. Thank you.
Okay, great. Monica.
Okay. So I will share with you all, I did graduate from Mount Healthy two years ago. I'm kidding, more like in nineteen ninety-two. It's been a minute. But, you know, when I was in, at Mount Healthy, Northwest, in its current state, is much like how Mount Healthy used to be. I know in our, and so, you know, I'm, I'm saying all that to say, I, I was fortunate where my parents had a decision to make and they let that, me make that decision and they said, do you want to go to finish up at Mount Healthy? Because at that time, our levies were starting to fill. Or do you want to go to private school? And of course, naturally, I said, I'm not leaving my friends, I want to go to, I want to finish up at Mount Healthy. Having said all that, I see similar things happening today in our district where we're, we're having key demographics leave. And I think that what we need to do is, is become more engaged in our hiring practices. I think our, our staff should be a little more reflective of the community served. I think that we have to make sure that we're doing things to attract that talent, whatever it looks like. One of the things, or several things actually, is, you know, I think people tend to get caught up in race, but we're not just diverse, we're not, we're, we're diverse beyond race, socioeconomic status. We have, I believe, thirty-eight different languages, over thirty-eight different languages spoken in our district, for example. We have folks with some need. We have people that are well-off. We have families that are in private education. And for, as a disclaimer, I did have my daughter at a private school for one year. But, you know, that was not economically feasible for, for me as a single parent. So I understand a lot of different aspects, but I think it's just going to take more people at the table with other perspectives, new best practices that have been learned, or I should, learned, new to our district, that we need to pull from other places and that talent, we need to pull from other places and get in here. And I think that'll help us move in the right direction.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Diane.
So what I would like to do to help as far as expand our diverse community and inclusion, and that is the main thing, is that it's not about the differences, but it's, everyone is actually heard and they have, has an opportunity to be a part of the community. We don't, we're not trying to push someone out, we're just trying to be included or a part of the community. So recognizing that, just because we have a difference doesn't mean that we, I have an issue with you personally or there's going to come to some bulls or some battle. It's a growth opportunity. It's a, it's an opportunity for us to actually learn. And I would like to actually put a voice to some of those communities or individuals who are not represented or who are not being heard, who are not, you know, not actually represented within what we're seeing as far as our leadership or on our table or within our, our staff. And the staff itself, there are many opportunities. There are so many different groups that get together as far as the different diversity of teachers, that you can go and do some recruiting at those different locations. And so this is not a race-based, it can be health-wise or gender, you know, identification, religion. We're, we're different in so many ways, but we're also, I think we're more same than we are and we focus on those little points of where, how we're different. But those key points where we are different are important. And the people who are, have those items, they just want to know that they're being heard and recognized. And I just would like to have the opportunity or give them the opportunity to be heard and recognized within our school district.
Okay, thank you.
Can you repeat the question again?
Yes, I can. Let me get you right here.
What will you do to promote diversity in our changing district and community?
The one thing is the hiring practices. When, when we're out looking for diversity with, with our teachers and that, you know, you can go to, they have these meetings and that for all these kids coming out of college and that. And the problem is, is because we're so low on the pay scale, you know, you have a, a kid come out of college and he can go over to this school district and make another ten thousand dollars compared to where we are. So we have to fix that and, and try and get to where what we can offer, you know, kids coming out of college, new teachers, we need to get them in. You know, that's, that's a start where it goes back to the levy again. We need to get this levy passed so we can maintain what we have. Our administrators, they, they work on diversity every day. So I, I think just continue to do that and get more people involved, get everybody in the district, you know. I, I know everybody's busy, make meetings, you know, I think like Monica said, you know, it's hard to, you know, if you work third shift or whatever to get to some meetings. But, you know, inclusion for the whole community is, is key to, to the diversity.
Great, thank you. We are, believe it or not, we're getting towards the end, but we have time for just a couple more questions. Why don't you go ahead?
Sure. What are you the most proud of when you look around the Northwest Local School District? And Monica, we're going to start with you.
I have to tell you, one of the things, and I will be very honest with people, I was very apprehensive about putting my daughter in here. I had a neighbor actually who I had no idea lived in my, in our school district. And she was instrumental in helping me get acclimated with the school, in the school system here. She does not look like me. I love the fact, and I'm proud of the fact, that we live in such a diverse community. That's how I grew up. I grew up with a lot of people who don't look like me. Or were the same socioeconomic status of me. I am very proud of that. I will, I, I am extremely proud that my daughter is exposed to that. I think that is critically important to the success of our children moving forward. We are going to have these kids who are competing not just on a local scale or a national scale, whether they go to college, whether they go to trade school, whether they have a certification out of high school. They're going to be competing globally. They're going to have to learn how to work with and be around people who are not like them. And I, I, I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of the fact that there were so many teachers that reached out to me, that reached out to my daughter, to the principals, everybody in between, the aides, even the janitors and the secretaries have been absolutely phenomenal in this district. They're there because they want to be there. Those are people that care. I think that we as a community owe it to make sure that we have leadership, administrators, board members and such, all of us, to make sure that they're supported. They have, they have a diff, they have a difficult job. I'm proud to be a part of PT and other organizations that have also helped with that financially. So those are some of the most important things that I'm proud of. Thanks.
Thank you.
Diane.
What am I most proud of? I love the community I live in. It's a beautiful neighborhood, but I actually have to give a very special shout-out to one specific community because they have welcomed me, and I don't live there, with open arms, and that is the Northbrook community. They are phenomenal when it comes to engaging and opening. They're very forefront as far as getting things done themselves. And that is what community should look like. And they're just a great example of what I'm glad I'm a part of and that they welcome me a part of their community. So I want to give a, you know, again, another shout-out to the Northbrook community on what they have done, what they continue to do, and for welcoming me to be a part of their journey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim.
The thing that I'm most proud of are those three brand-new schools that we just built. You know, giving our kids an even playing field, you know, twenty-first century learning. You know, I'm proud of all the accolades that our students get. Like I said earlier, you know, we had four kids get their associate degree coming, coming out of our engineering class, you know, things like that. Our athletes, they get, that get scholarships, you know. Our kids that are taking these AP classes, that are passing these tests and, you know, are saving thousands and thousands of dollars, you know, when they go to college. You know, things like that, that, that's what I'm most proud of. It's not mainly what I'm doing, it's but what our kids are accomplishing in what they're doing. And, you know, that's, that's, that's the main thing because we're, I'm here for the kids and, you know, making it a good education so they can succeed when they leave our schools.
Thank you. Matt?
Okay. What am I most proud of in Northwest Local School District? I think the, the opportunities that Northwest Local School District provides for all the students, to run the gamut, you know, like I mentioned, my son's in marching band, but then, you know, you have the sports, of course. But then it goes further than that. As far as extracurricular opportunities, you've got numerous gaming clubs and Cards for Christ and academic quiz team and things of that nature. And then when you get to the academics of the school district and what they offer, they offer the College Credit Plus programs that are mentioned, the AP classes that are offered to the students. And of course, their association with Butler Tech and the many, many programs that they offer, both on-campus at Corrine and Northwest and then off-campus at, you know, other Butler Tech campuses. And I think those are all, you know, great things to be proud of.
Yeah, that's great. Believe it or not, we have so many more things. Believe it or not, we have so many more things that we'd like to cover, but we have come towards the end. I do want to give you all a chance for a very quick, one-minute closing statement. And I am going to start with you, Diane.
Thank you. For me, as I mentioned, you know, I am, I do have a degree, you know, I am college-educated, but it is more than that. So as far as my education, that is what I personally would like my children to walk down, a lot of other individuals would, and I'd like to continue to see that focus and I'm striving to work with that as well. Student engagement for me is very important and is to meet the students where they are. If they're not learning from this discipline, is to understand and actually be more transparent and humble to recognize this one item does not necessarily work for everyone. And for me, being more transparent about what works and what doesn't work and understanding that what I have to offer or what someone else, there maybe needs to be some adjustments on that. And then as far as closing statement, I want to really kind of come back to a previous point about bringing our staff and our teachers on and that pay is important. Yes, pay is important, but it's not everything. We are here because we want to be a part of this community and we want to be a part of the change. And I am hoping that you guys will allow me to take you on this or continue this journey of change.
Thank you.
Jen?
First of all, I'd like to thank Waycross for having us here and answering the questions. I just want to say, I enjoy being on the school board. I've been on for 12 years. The student success is the thing that I'm here for is because it's for the kids and their success is what's going to make, make or break, you know, our district. We just need to focus on that and just would appreciate your vote on November 5th. Thanks.
And Matt?
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to state that if I'm elected to the school board, I would look forward to working towards moving the district forward and improving the state report card and the overall education of all the students in the district. And I'll be bringing my experience as a parent and as a taxpayer as well to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And Monica?
I want to thank everybody, you all and the rest of the candidates that are here tonight for this opportunity to be up here. One thing I want to keep in mind, I think it's important to remember that we are one district. We have, I've heard 52 to 56 square miles in our district. And I think that it's important to remember that we are all, we all have a vested interest, whether we live in gross back, pleasant-run farms, green township, wherever, whatever part of the community. We all have a vested interest in making sure that all of our students are prepared for success when they get out of high school. And I think that we need to have some fresh faces, frankly, and I think that we need people who understand that reality. And rather that be our kids that are going to, you know, post-secondary education or into the workforce, I think we need to make sure that we're preparing everyone in this entire district for that. So thank you for your time and I humbly ask for your vote. Sorry, bye.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for joining us this evening, taking these questions, spending time with us. I want to thank you, the viewers, as well for participating in this process. If you need more information before you vote in the upcoming election, you can watch all of our election forums online at www-waycross.tv. You can also go to the Hamilton County Board of Elections website to make sure you are registered, look at a sample ballot and find out where your voting location is. That's votehamiltoncounty.org. Register to vote by October 7th, that is the deadline, and we look forward to seeing you at the polls on November 5th. I'm Dana Gagnon, Waycross Community Government Programming Coordinator, and this is Jenny Key from the Cincinnati Enquirer and Community Press. Thank you for joining us, Jenny. And we look forward to seeing you at the polls on November 5th. Waycross takes no positions on candidates or issues. We conduct these forums so that our viewers may be better-informed voters for the November 5th election.